Good morning, everyone. We're going to get started now. We've established a quorum. If all the guests and visitors will please go behind the rail, we will get started with today's agenda. To give our invocation this morning, the Chair recognizes Dr. Shelby Crawford of Bryant Baptist Church. She is here today as the guest of Councilman Bill Greenley. I would ask all guests and visitors and members to please rise.
Bow our heads for a word of prayer. O God, our God, how excellent is Thy name in all the earth. Lord, we just ask that you continue to bless this assembly, Lord, that you indulge them with wisdom, knowledge, and understanding, Lord. Lord, that you allow them to make their decision in righteousness and in truth. Lord, we just thank you, Lord, for all you've done, all you're doing, and all you're gonna do. Lord, we just ask you that you make this assembly prosper in all the decisions that they make, Lord, that you continue this as a great city, Lord, to serve you, to be guided by you, Lord. We just thank you for all things in your precious Son Jesus' name. Amen, amen, and amen.
Amen. Thank you so much for those inspiring words. And again, thank you very much for those inspiring words. A little quiet, please. Thank you. The next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, October 29, 2015, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Greenley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, October 29, 2015, be approved.
Thank you. It's been moved and properly seconded at the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, October 29, 2015. Stand and approve. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and then the Journal is approved. The next order of business is requests for leaves of absence, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the majority, there are no requests for leaves or absence today.
Chair, thanks to gentlemen. Chair now recognizes Councilman O'Neill.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the Republicans, there are no requests for leave of absence.
Chair, thanks to gentlemen. At this time, I would like to dispense with the regular order of business, and I would like to welcome and thank everyone who has come down today to witness our government in action. We hope that your stay today is a pleasurable one, so much so that you come back again, and even our good friends from Frankfurt. If you happen to be in Philadelphia again in your next trip, again, come by and see the City Council of Philadelphia. Thank you. At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilman Greenley, who will present a citation on my behalf, recognizing the sister-city partnership between Frankfurt and Philadelphia. With Mayor Peter Feldman and those accompanying him, please join the Councilman at the podium. And joining Councilman Greenley, we have Councilman Heenan and Councilwoman Lino Reynolds Brown.
Please proceed. Thank you, Mr. President. I'm pleased to present this resolution honoring and recognizing the visiting delegation of Frankfurt, Germany. The Council of the City of Philadelphia is pleased and proud to honor and recognize the delegation visiting from Frankfurt, Germany, a sister city of Philadelphia, and...
Whereas, the city of Philadelphia is proud of its strong German influences, which can be found in neighborhoods like Germantown and the great Philadelphia company, Deetson-Watson. And whereas Frankfurt is also the home of a thriving creative industries, life sciences, biotechnology, and many more professional services. And in the German headquarters of the city of Philadelphia, law firms Morgan Lewis, Deckard, and Reed Smith, and...
Whereas Frankfurt and Philadelphia share common histories as birthplaces of democracy, as well as common cultural and economic characteristics. And whereas Lord Mayor Peter Feldman and City Council Chairman Stephen Siegler are leading the delegation in recognition of the sister-city partnership. And whereas the delegation of Frankfurt comprises political and civic leaders dedicated to strengthening economic, educational, and cultural opportunities for cooperation between Frankfurt and Philadelphia.
Therefore, by virtue of this citation, the Council of the City of Philadelphia does hereby honor and recognize the sister cities partnership between Philadelphia and Frankfurt. We hope you enjoy your stay in Philadelphia and that you return home safely with fond memories. We in this council extend the sincere respect and admiration of this legislative body. Congratulations. This is a citation from the entire City Council, signed by Council President Clark, and carries the sentiments of the whole City Council of Philadelphia. Again, welcome to Philadelphia and congratulations.
And the Chair recognizes Mayor Peter Feldman for remarks.
Dear ladies and gentlemen, thank you, City Council President Derek Clark, for your kind invitation. It's an honor and I'm proud to speak on behalf of the city of Frankfurt. Mayor Nutter, back in July, also spoke in front of our city council. And the signing today of a new sister-city Frankfurt-Philadelphia agreement is a great honor for all of us. We are happy to found the best city in the U.S. Mayor Nutter has put a lot of determination and commitment into this agreement. He's a great friend of Frankfurt and a great mayor to your city. I'm sure our cities have a fantastic future. Our history unites our city. Common shared interests, opportunities for collaboration. Both cities international, multicultural, diverse. A large intercontinental airport with direct flights, which make us easy to reach each other. Strong industry, farmer, IT, and finance clusters. Ladies and gentlemen, the next generation will experience how rewarding exchange is. Ausgoos are waiting for this exchange. From my side, congratulations. Philadelphia is the first U.S. World Heritage City. The reception and celebration yesterday, it's a great honor to be invited. Thank you all for your kind invitation. We're having a great time in your great city. We're looking forward to have you City Council President Derek Clark and Mayor-elect Jim Kenny and the delegation as guests in our city, Frankfurt. It would be a significant and personal honor for me and the people of Frankfurt to welcome you in our city. The people of Germany and many others around the world want to know more about the great city of Philadelphia. On behalf of the whole delegation, it's an honor for me, the Chairman of our city council, Mr. Siegler, and all of us to be with you today. Thank you. Dankeschön.
Thank you, Mayor Feldman. Counsel will be at ease. Counsel will be at ease. Thank you very much. Thank you. At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilman O'Neill, who presented a resolution recognizing Mast Community Charter School. With John Sawyer and those accompanying him, please join the Councilman at the podium.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a resolution recognizing and honoring Mast Community Charter School for being named the top, the number-one charter school in Pennsylvania and 30th in the United States. Mast, when it was founded in 1999, stood for Math and Science and Technology. Am I correct in that? It's expanded a little bit since then, as you'll hear. But I want to just throw out a statistic that speaks volumes in addition to this recognition as the top charter school. Mast runs a lottery, as most charters do, if not all, and the last lottery had 7,100 children participating in it. 100 were picked in the lottery. The waiting list at Mast is 7,000. Whereas Mast Community Charter School was recently chosen as the top charter school in Pennsylvania and the 30th overall charter school in the United States, according to niche.com. Whereas Niche was founded in 2002 by Carnegie Mellon University students as a way to inform parents of K-12 education options in their area. Whereas various factors are taken into account when determining the rankings, including academic grades, health and safety, student culture and diversity, parent and student survey responses, teacher grades, extracurricular activities, resources and facilities, and sports and fitness. Whereas Mast Community Charter School's success is based on a stream curriculum, S-T-R-E-A-M, science, technology, robotics, engineering, arts, and math. The stream model provides students with hands-on and creative activities and lessons. Whereas some of the amenities Mast offers include an HD video studio, library media center, science-grade robotic telescope, stream playground, an outdoor classroom, fitness center, robotics and 3D printing studios, and iPad learning programs. And whereas Mast had previously been ranked as the charter school in Philadelphia by U.S. News and World Reports, now therefore resolved by the Council of the City of Philadelphia that we hereby recognize and honor Mast Community Charter School for being named the top charter school in Pennsylvania and 30th in the United States. Further resolved that in a gross copy of this resolution be presented to Mast Community Charter School as evidence of the sincere sentiments of this legislative body, and that was co-sponsored by all members of council and signed by the Council President.
And the Chair recognizes Mr. Sawyer for remarks.
First off, I wanted to say thank you to Councilman O'Neill. Mast is proud to be recognized for this award. I brought down some of our students from Student Council and our teacher. Education in Philadelphia is growing and improving each year, and Mast is happy to be part of that solution. We are recognized this year as a top charter, but we've also been granted a second school in Councilman Heenan's district next year, and we thank the council for all the support, and we hope to continue to do great things. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel shall be at ease. At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Lino Reynolds Brown, who presented a resolution establishing November 15, 2015, as America Recycles Day in Philadelphia. Would Phil Breezy and those accompanying him please join the Councilwoman at the podium? And joining Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, we have Councilwoman Kiona Sanchez and Councilwoman Cindy Bass.
On your behalf this morning, we are thrilled to lift up this thing called environment and sustainability, since we now know that climate warming is real and recycling matters. So on your behalf today, November the 15th, 2015, we are saluting America Recycles Day in the city of Philadelphia. Whereas each year, Philadelphia residents and businesses combine to generate more than 2.5 million tons of solid waste at a rate of nine pounds per person per day. Whereas Philadelphia has reached an overall recycling rate of nearly 50%, and each year these overall recycling efforts divert more than 1 million tons of material to a useful second life instead of disposal. Saves the same amount of energy consumed by over 43,000 households in a year, avoids greenhouse gas emissions equivalent to removing more than 101,000 cars from the road, and helps the overall economy and create jobs by providing raw materials for manufacturing.
Whereas Philadelphia continues to grow its recycling program by operating the Port Richmond Sanitation Convenience Center on November 13th, kicking off the annual fall leaf collection. And through expanded educational outreach about the importance of recycling and recycling right, and whereas the Philadelphia School District has made great strides in recycling, and other institutions such as the Philadelphia International Airport and the Philadelphia Prison System continue to be leaders in recycling and waste reduction, and whereas to focus the nation's attention on the importance of recycling, businesses, industries, government agencies, nonprofit organizations, and individuals have joined together to celebrate America Recycles Day and are encouraging their friends, neighbors, and coworkers to pledge to learn more about recycling options in their community and commit to recycle more materials, and...
Point of personal privilege, when I first got elected, we had less than 1% recycling rate, and because of the hard work of this team and the Streets Department, we have increased that to about 12%. So this is extremely significant, and I want to thank the team. Whereas the Philadelphia Streets Department celebrates America Recycles Day this year by improving recycling in municipal services buildings, utilizing its partners Keep Philadelphia Beautiful and Recycle Bank to assist in outreach efforts to city offices and employees. And whereas participating in America Recycles Day 2015 is one way citizens can help raise awareness about the need to reduce waste by reusing, recycling, and buying recycled content products. And whereas Philadelphia leaders can also use this as an opportunity to spread the word about the excellent recycling programs that have been established, the growth of the markets for recyclable materials, not to mention the millions of dollars we save in the city, and the importance of buying recycled products, now therefore it be resolved that the Council of Philadelphia does hereby establish November 15, 2015, as America Recycles Day in our city. Further resolved that in a gross copy of this resolution be presented to Phil Breezy, Recycling Director, along with the representatives of the Philadelphia Streets Department, as sincere evidence of this legislative body. Introduced on behalf of President Clark and supported by all members of the Philadelphia City Council. Let's salute these professionals.
The Chair recognizes Mr. Breezy for remarks.
Thank you, Mr. President, Councilmembers Reynolds, Brown, Sanchez, and Bass for introducing the resolution, other members of council staff, and Philadelphians. I also want to wish, thank Mayor Michael Nutter for his vision and leadership, Streets Commissioner Dave Perry, and Deputy Commissioner Donald Carlton for their leadership and confidence they've shown in me the last few years. Additionally, I need to recognize our partners at other agencies and institutions, including the School District, the Prison System, Department of Public Property, and Philadelphia International Airport, as well as partners such as Keep Philadelphia Beautiful and Recycle Bank, who actually take the lead from my team in coordinating this event. And finally, I need to recognize my team for the outstanding dedication that they've shown to recycling and to our office, and many of them are up here behind me. So America Recycles Day is a program of Keep America Beautiful, and it's a nationally-recognized, community-driven awareness campaign dedicated to promoting and celebrating recycling in the U.S. It's been held on or around November 15th since 1997. As we do this, it's worth noting the progress that recycling has made in Philadelphia. As recently as 2008, our curbside recycling program diverted less than 50,000 tons of recyclables per year. If we fast forward to the last few years, we're now collecting an average of about 120,000 tons a year, which is about 140% increase. More Philadelphians are recycling than ever before, but we also need to recycle right, which means keeping things like styrofoam and especially plastic retailer bags out of our recycling bins. These are contaminants and make processing our recyclables more expensive and make them less valuable to end users. Each ton of recyclables we collect in our curbside program saves the city about $60 in disposal fees, and as mentioned, the accrued greenhouse gas reductions and energy savings are equivalent to removing 100,000 cars off our streets and the energy usage for 40,000 homes. Recycling doesn't stop at the blue bin. We've greatly enhanced our business recycling efforts. We have improved our, expanded our drop-off center network by opening new sanitation centers and are beginning a feasibility study of organics recycling possibilities and working to improve recycling in city buildings. So in closing, our programs have reached new heights because Philadelphians have embraced recycling and doubled down on our commitment to it. Recycling is a no-nonsense and easy way to help our environment and the city's bottom line, and can help make Philadelphia one of the greenest cities in the U.S. Thank you very much.
Counsel will be at ease. Before we proceed with the next order of business, the Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to take this opportunity to welcome some of our guests here today from Mastery Charter School, the Shoemaker Campus, and their principal Sharif Amaki, right here. Could we all join them and thank them for their participation in our democracy here...
Please stand up. Thank you, Councilman. And our next order of business is communications, and the Chair requested the Sergeant of Arms delivers the messages from the mayor to the Chief Clerk. May Mr. Decker please read those messages.
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, I am pleased to advise you that on November tenth, two thousand and fifteen, I signed the remaining bills which were passed by council added session on October twenty-two, two thousand and fifteen, and that on November tenth, two thousand and fifteen, I signed all the bills which were passed by council added session on October twenty-nine, two thousand and fifteen. And I am submitting herewith for the consideration of your honorable body, a resolution appointing Timothy Snowden to the Board of Directors for the Old City Special Services District, and a resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the new Kensington-Fishtown urban renewal area identified by house number and street address as twenty-four, twenty-five East Firth Street, and a resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the new Kensington-Fishtown urban, urban renewal area identified by house number and street addresses as eight East Palmer Street, and a resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the model city's urban renewal area identified by house numbers and street addresses as twenty-fourteen, twenty-sixteen, twenty-eighteen, twenty-twenty, twenty-two through twenty-six, twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-nine through thirty-six, and twenty-thirty through thirty-six North Sixteenth Street, and sixteen-oh-one and sixteen-oh-three through, through oh-five Page Street. And an ordinance authorizing the paving of Gate Street from Silverwood Street to Cross Street and Cross Street from Gate Street to a point approximately two hundred and forty-six feet southeastwardly therefrom. And an ordinance authorizing the revision of lines and grades in a portion of City Plan Number Two Thirty-One by striking from the City Plan a portion of the cartway of Cross Street southeast of Gate Street, but retaining the said portion of Cross Street as a, as a public way closed to vehicular traffic. And an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to acquire fee simple title or lesser interest in real estate in parcels of land along the Delaware River and the Kensington and Tacony Trail. And an ordinance authorizing the revision of lines and grades in a portion of City Plan Number One Eighty-Seven by striking from the City Plan Edgemont Street from Wee Chief Lane to a point approximately two hundred and sixty-eight feet southwestwardly therefrom. And an ordinance authorizing the Public Property Commissioner to convey to the Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development, all are part of a parcel commonly known as twenty-seven twenty-one through twenty-seven seventy-seven Ruth Street. And an ordinance authorizing transfers and appropriations for fiscal year two thousand and sixteen from the General Fund, the Department of Revenue, the Board of Trustees of the Free Library of Philadelphia, the Commission on Human Relations, and the Grants Revenue Fund, the Director of Finance Provision for Other Grants to the General Fund, the Mayor, Office of Community Empowerment and Opportunity, the Managing Director of Legal Services, the Department of Revenue, the Director of Commerce, the Law Department, the Board of Trustees of the Free Library of Philadelphia, and the Commission on Human Relations. And an ordinance authorizing transfers and appropriations for fiscal year two thousand and fifteen from the General Fund, from certain all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions, to certain all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions. And an ordinance authorizing transfers and appropriations for fiscal year two thousand and fifteen within the Water Fund, from certain all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions, to certain all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions. And an ordinance authorizing transfers and appropriations for fiscal year two thousand and sixteen from the Grants Revenue Fund, the Director of Finance Provision for Other Grants, to the General Fund, the Mayor, Office of Innovation and Technology, the Managing Director, the Managing Director, Office of Fleet Management, the Police Department, the Department of Streets, the Fire Department, the Department of Parks and Recreation, the Department of Public Property, and the Department of Human Services, Office of Support of Housing, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. Do you have any additional communications?
I have none, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. The next order of business is introduction of bills and resolutions, and the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today I introduce one bill and one privileged resolution.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you.
An ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Chestnut Street, Thirty-seventh Street, Sansom Street, and Thirty-eighth Street.
Refer to committee.
And a privileged resolution recognizing and honoring Kevin J. Bethel, the Deputy Police Commissioner in the Philadelphia Police Department, for his commitment and dedication to serving the city of Philadelphia and its citizens, and congratulate him on being named a Diana A. Milner Youth Justice Fellow by the Stonely Foundation, a post that will require him to spend the next three years addressing Philadelphia's school-to-prison pipeline.
This week's final passes calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. On your behalf, I offer one bill and two resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Atlantic Street, Old York Road, Teogue Street, and Thirteenth Street.
Refer to committee.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration dees, convey unconditional fees, simple title, and setting on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements they're on, situated in the thirty-seventh ward of the City of Philadelphia.
And that will be on next week's final passes calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the model city's urban renewal area identified by house numbers and street addresses as twenty-fourteen North Sixteenth Street, twenty-sixteen North Sixteenth Street, twenty-eighteen North Sixteenth Street, twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-two through twenty-six, twenty-twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-nine through thirty-five, twenty-thirty through thirty-six, and twenty-thirty through thirty-six North Sixteenth Street, and sixteen-oh-one Page Street, and sixteen-oh-three through oh-five Page Street.
Next week's final passes calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today I introduce two bills.
Thank you.
An ordinance authorizing the revision of lines and grades in a portion of City Plan Number One Eighty-Seven by striking from the City Plan Edgemont Street from Wee Chief Lane to a point approximately two hundred and sixty-eight feet southwestwardly therefrom.
Refer to committee.
And an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property on behalf of the city to acquire fee simple title or lesser interest in real estate in parcels of land along the Delaware River and the Kensington and Tacony Trail.
Also refer to committee. And the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Tasko.
Mr. President, I offer two bills.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Before Mr. Decker reads that resolution, I would ask if anyone has a, in this case it sounds like an alarm clock, but if you have a phone or any other electronic device that makes any noise whatsoever, I'd ask that you please turn it off and or turn it on silent. Thank you very much. Mr. Decker.
And ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Rising Sun Avenue, Distant Street, Oxford Avenue, and Long Shore Avenue.
And refer to committee.
And an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Stenton Avenue, East Burn Street, Rodney Street, East Haines Street, Homer Street, Cornelia Street, and East Walnut Lane.
Also refer to committee. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Council President, I have one non-privileged resolution and one bill.
Thank you, Councilman.
You're welcome.
An ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property and the Director of Commerce acting on behalf of the city to enter into an agreement with Tinnecombe Township, Delaware County, for the lease and purchase from Tinnecombe Township of an approximately twenty-one point eight acre parcel of land adjacent to the Philadelphia International Airport.
Refer to committee.
And a privileged resolution authorizing City Council's Committee on Commerce and Economic Development to hold hearings regarding economic opportunity and diversity participation in the Philadelphia International Airport and the Navy Yard.
And that will be on this week's final passes calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman O'Neil, O'Brien.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one privileged resolution.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman.
A privileged resolution recognizing November two thousand and fifteen as Epilepsy Awareness Month in honor of individuals living with epilepsy, their families, and those working to improve their quality of life.
And that will be on this week's final passes calendar. And the Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson on behalf of Councilwoman Kiona Sanchez.
Council President, I introduce one bill and one resolution on behalf of Councilwoman Sanchez.
Thank you, Councilman.
You're welcome.
An ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property on behalf of the City of Philadelphia to convey to the Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development, all are part of a parcel commonly known as twenty-seven twenty-one through seventy-seven Ruth Street.
Refer to committee.
And a non-privileged resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the new Kensington-Fishtown urban renewal area identified by house number and street address as...
And that will be on next week's final passes calendar. Chair now recognizes Councilman Good.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer four bills on behalf of the administration.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance authorizing transfers and appropriations for fiscal year two thousand and fifteen within the General Fund, from certain all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions, to certain all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions. And an ordinance authorizing transfers and appropriations for fiscal year two thousand and fifteen within the Water Fund, from certain all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions, to certain all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions. And an ordinance authorizing transfers and appropriations for fiscal year two thousand and sixteen from the Grants Revenue Fund, the Director of Finance Provision for Other Grants, to the General Fund, the Mayor, Office of Innovation and Technology, the Managing Director, the Managing Director, Office of Fleet Management, the Police Department, the Department of Streets, the Fire Department, the Department of Parks and Recreation, the Department of Public Property, and Department of Human Services, Office of Support of Housing. And an ordinance authorizing transfers and appropriations for fiscal year two thousand and sixteen from the General Fund, the Department of Revenue, the Board of Trustees of the Free Library of Philadelphia, the Commission on Human Relations, and the Grants Revenue Fund, the Director of Finance Provision for Other Grants, to the General Fund, the Mayor, Office of Community Empowerment and Opportunity, the Managing Director of Legal Services, the Department of Revenue, the Director of Commerce, the Law Department, the Board of Trustees of the Free Library of Philadelphia, and the Commission on Human Relations.
Those four bills just read by the Chief Clerk will be reported to the appropriate committee. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Mr. President, I offer one privileged resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
A privileged resolution honoring and recognizing the Green Stormwater Infrastructure Partners for advancing the local economic potential and environmental and social benefits of green city clean waters.
And that will be on today's final passes calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today I offer seven bills.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance authorizing the paving of Gate Street from Silverwood Street to Cross Street and Cross Street from Gate Street to a point approximately two hundred and forty-six feet southeastwardly therefrom, and an ordinance authorizing the revision of lines and grades in a portion of City Plan Number Two Thirty-One by striking from the City Plan a portion of the cartway of Cross Street southeast of Gate Street, but retaining the said, the said portion of Cross Street as a public way closed to vehicular traffic. And an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Shidmore Street, Commissioner, Commissioner Street, Thirty-Fourth Street, and Indiana Street. And an ordinance amending Title Fourteen of the Philadelphia Code entitled zoning and planning by creating a new Ridge Park Roxborough NCO for the area generally bounded by Ridge Avenue, Paoli Avenue, Umbria Street, and Leverton Avenue. And an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Conchahocken Road, Country Club Road, Wentworth Road Extended, Lankinaw Avenue, and Cranston Road. And an ordinance amending Section Nine Two Oh Five of the Philadelphia Code entitled sidewalk sales to prohibit sidewalk vending on the southern side of Hunting Park Avenue between Stokely and Thirtieth Street to include Baker Square Center Shopping Center. And an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Roosevelt Boulevard, Abertford Avenue, Whistaken Avenue, Hunting Park Avenue, Allegheny Avenue, Ridge Avenue, and Scotts Lane.
Thank you. Those seven bills just read by the Chief Clerk will be referred to the appropriate committees, and the Chair recognizes Councilman O'Neil.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no bills or resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Swilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer two bills and four resolutions, one which is privileged.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance amending Title Fourteen of the Philadelphia Code entitled zoning and planning by revising the development standards and definitions for green roofs.
Refer to committee.
And an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by South Street, Sixth Street, Washington Avenue, and Eleventh Street.
Also refer to committee.
And a privileged resolution honoring and congratulating Pesto Restaurant on winning the first-ever Rafael Ray Little Italy showdown where they represented Philadelphia and bested restaurants from both New York and San Francisco.
Will be on this week's final passes calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration dees, convey conditional fees, simple title, and setting on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements they're on, situated in the thirty-first ward of the City of Philadelphia.
Next week's final passes calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the new Kensington-Fishtown urban renewal area identified by house number and street addresses as twenty-four, twenty-five East Firth Street.
Next week's final passes calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution appointing Timothy Snowden to the Board of Directors for the Old City Special Services District.
And that will be referred to committee. The Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer one bill and two resolutions.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you.
An ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Allegheny Avenue, Seventeenth Street, West Morland Street, and Nineteenth Street.
Refer to committee.
And a privileged resolution recognizing and honoring the Philadelphia Interfaith Hospitality Network for their ongoing and compassionate efforts in providing shelter and support to homeless families on the occasion of their seventeenth annual Empty Bowl Dinner to be held Wednesday, November eighteen, two thousand and fifteen.
This week's final passes calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution urging the United States Congress to pass the Every Child Deserves a Family Act, and recognizing November twenty-one, two thousand and fifteen as National Adoption Day in the city of Philadelphia.
And that will be on next week's final passes calendar. And the Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I offer no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilman. That concludes our introduction of bills and resolutions, and we now have our reports on committee. And the Chair recognizes Councilman Good for a report from the committee on appropriations.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Appropriation reports two bills with favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, please read that report.
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, the Committee on Appropriations to which is referred Bill Number One Five Oh Six Five Three entitled, "An Ordinance Authorizing Transfers and Appropriations for Fiscal Year Two Thousand and Sixteen from the Grants Revenue Fund, the Director of Finance Provision for Other Grants, to the Housing Trust Fund, the Mayor, Office of Housing and Community Development, to expand the availability of the services provided through the Energy Fili Program whereby affordable housing is preserved through the coordination of home repair and energy services. And Bill Number One Five Oh Seven Nine Oh entitled, "An Ordinance Amending Bill Number One Five Oh One Six Two A," entitled, "An Ordinance to Adopt the Capital Program for the Six Fiscal Years Two Thousand and Sixteen through Twenty-One inclusive, as amended by Bill Number One Five Oh Six One One, by adding and revising certain projects, amounts, and sources." Respectfully reports that as considered the same, and returns the attached bills to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Chair again recognizes Councilman Good.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the rules of council to be suspended so as permit first reading this day of Bills Number One Five Oh Six Five Three and One Five Oh Seven Nine Zero.
Thank you. It's been moved in property second that the rules of council be suspended so as permit first reading this day of Bills Number One Five Oh Six Five Three and One Five Oh Seven Nine Oh. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes haven't, those bills will be placed on our first reading calendar today. Chair now again recognizes Councilman Good for a report from the Committee on Labor and Civil Service.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Labor and Civil Service reports one bill with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, please read your report.
The Committee on Labor and Civil Service to which is referred Bill Number One Five Oh Seven Two Oh entitled, "An Ordinance Amending Title Twenty-Two of the Philadelphia Code," entitled Public Employees Retirement Code, "to expand the scope of Plan Ten and D.C. Plan to cover additional employees, including employees represented by AFSCME District Council Thirty-Three, who work for the Office of Housing and Community Development, and to make technical amendments, all under certain terms and conditions." Respectfully reports that as considered the same, and returns the attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Chair again recognizes Councilman Good.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the rules of council to be suspended so as permit first reading this day of Bills Number One Five Oh Seven Two Zero.
Thank you. It's been moved in property second that the rules of council be suspended so as a permit first reading this day of Bills Number One Five Oh Seven Two Oh. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes haven't, that bill will be placed on our first reading calendar today. And that concludes our reports on committee, and the next order of business is the consideration of the calendar. I note that the bills just reported from committee with a suspension of the rules have been deemed to have had their first reading. These bills will be, be on our second reading and final passes calendar at our next session of council. As there are no additional bills on the first reading calendar, the Chair recognizes Councilman Jones for the purpose of calling up bills and resolutions on the final passage.
Thank you, Mr. President. The following resolutions and bills are being called up from second reading and final passage calendars today. Numbers, One Five Oh Eight Nineteen, One Five Oh Eight Twenty, One Five Oh Eight Twenty-four, One Five Oh Eight Twenty-five, One Five Oh Eight Twenty-six, One Five Oh Eight Thirty-one, One Four Oh Six Oh Seven A, One Four Oh Seven Sixteen A... 150826, 150831, 140607A, 140716A, 150502, 150505, 150741, and 150708. All other bills and resolutions are being held.
Thank you, Councilman.
Yeah. Mr. President, it's my understanding that 500581 is going to be withdrawn by the members?
Yes, Councilman. Thank you. Before we read these bills and resolutions on the final passes calendar, we will have our public comment session. Public comment session will go as follows. If you are interested in testifying on a bill or resolution that is on the final passes calendar today, if you have not already done so, I'd ask that you sign up at the table to my left. When your name is called, you will report to the podium in the middle of the council chambers. You will see a device on that podium. There's a light. When the light turns green, it is your time to speak. When the light turns yellow, you will have 30 seconds to conclude your remarks, and when the light turns red, we would ask that you adhere to the guidelines and conclude your remarks. You will be given three minutes to testify. Mr. Decker, please read the first name on the list.
Dale Steinberg. Commenting on 150824.
Hello. Thank you. My name's Dale Steinberg, and I'm President and CEO of Planned Parenthood Southeastern Pennsylvania. For almost 100 years, Planned Parenthood has been the nation's most trusted women's health care provider. At our four health centers in Philadelphia, we see more than 20,000 women, teens, and men every year for reproductive health care, including family planning, birth control, life-saving cancer screenings, and treatment and testing for sexually transmitted infection. We treat health care as a basic human right, and we dispense it freely and without judgment, and regardless of ability to pay. One in five women in their lifetimes will come to a Planned Parenthood. For many of these women's, it's their only entry into the health care system. They really have nowhere else to turn. We all know about attempts across the country to deny access to Planned Parenthood services, and we're really sad to see this happen in Pennsylvania. We also know that the real agenda behind these attempts to deny funding for health care services is to ban abortion and stop women from receiving reproductive health care at Planned Parenthood, and denying those who need it most, taking it out on the thousands who depend on Planned Parenthood for their health care. It shouldn't have to be an act of courage to stand up for Planned Parenthood. Unfortunately, sometimes it is. We'd like to thank Councilwomen Reynolds Brown, Bass, and Tasco for having the courage to introduce this resolution, and to all the council members who will stand strong with us against politically motivated attacks that would severely limit services to women and families in Philadelphia and across the Commonwealth. Thank you for your consideration of this resolution.
Thank you for your comment.
Darrell Zaslow. Commenting on 140716.
Good morning, Mr. Majority Leader, members of the council. My name is Darrell Zaslow. I am legal counsel to HAPCO, the Homeowners Association of Philadelphia, the largest owners association of rental property owners in the state of Pennsylvania. I appear this morning to confirm that we will not be opposing Bill 140716 as we recognize the concern of tenants in rental housing, that they need adequate notice of a rent increase. We thank Councilman Greenlee and his staff for their diligent willingness to meet with the owners of property to create this fair compromise in the bill. I do wish, however, to raise two issues of concern and to share it with you this morning. All leases contain a provision for termination and the notice required in order to increase rent. The assertion of municipal government that the changes should be made here in this chamber provide a concern for us. We feel it more appropriately resides with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania because if every municipality in the state of Pennsylvania, every borough, every township, is going to presume to create notice provisions and other requirements in the landlord-tenant relationship, there's going to be a myriad patchwork of regulations all across the state. Secondly, we express a concern regarding the legislative findings of the bill, which express a concern for the ability of tenants to have the benefit of tax relief, and the bill recites that owners have that benefit because this chamber has provided that benefit. Tenants do not have that benefit, and the reason why they don't have the benefit is because legislation which is enacted discriminates against the owners of rental property and thereby discriminates against the tenants that live in that property. The reason that tenants don't have property tax relief is because the owners of that property do not have the tax relief. We urge upon you and request in the future that you focus on equality in taxation and not discriminate against that half of our city which occupies residential real estate although it is occupied by tenants. I thank you for your attention, and my sincere best wishes, Mr. President, to you as the Kenny Clark were in this chamber as the Clark-Kenny era begins. We wish you the best of success on all of our behalf. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your testimony.
George Gould. Commenting on 140716.
Thank you.
Good morning.
My name is George Gould. I'm a managing attorney at Community Legal Services in Philadelphia. We are here to strongly support this bill. What it does for the first time, it imposes requirements regarding when a landlord must give tenants notice of a rent increase. If the lease is for more than a year, they must give at least 60 days' notice. In addition, the tenant has responsibilities too, and they have to respond within 30 days of receipt of the notice. So no matter when the landlord gives the notice, the tenant has to respond in 30 days. The importance of this bill is, as you're aware, there is no rent control in Philadelphia, and landlords basically can raise the rent whatever is appropriate they think is appropriate, and the tenant doesn't have a choice. What this bill does, and it's very important, it gives tenants the opportunity to decide, one, if they in fact want to pay the rent increase, or, two, whether they want to relocate, and gives them time and the opportunity to find other housing. We think this bill is very important. We thank Councilman Greenlee and his staff for spending a lot of time on this. We had several meetings with Mr. Zaslow to work out some kind of a compromise, which we did, and we urge City Council to pass the bill. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Joe Donihell. Commenting on 150820.
Morning, everybody.
Morning.
I used to be the owner of 1038 West Wyoming in the Logan section of Philadelphia. My property was unconstitutionally seized by the Redevelopment Authority of the City of Philadelphia. To give this authority any more property from the City of Philadelphia or and/or people that occupy property in the City of Philadelphia is a crime. This organization, there have been several newsletters written about how this organization conducts its business with public funds, and it refuses to act in a constitutional manner. In my case, the property was seized in 2012 after forcing me to exit the property in 1994. Ms. Tasco knows of it. Ms. Kionna Sanchez knows of it. Nobody has come to my aid. Nobody has come to my aid. And this is a sad state of affairs in the City of Philadelphia that this public-run agency is grabbing properties in two new districts in North Philadelphia and off of Gerard Avenue, and they are building public condos and everything. Everybody likes the condos. The only problem is the property, the land, must be constitutionally taken and hasn't been. And therefore, I am notifying City Council in person at this meeting that this agency is a rogue agency. It needs to be reevaluated. Its funds need to be pulled until it complies with the U.S. Constitution because definitely the City of Philadelphia can't say that they don't have to operate under the U.S. Constitution. It is the basis of our laws. It was signed down in the Intendents Hall, and it's a crime that this city, above all others, doesn't say example and take property constitutionally. There are plenty of funds in the budget, and if there aren't, then we can't take them. It needs to be attended to immediately.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your testimony.
There are no other speakers on the public comment list, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. We will now continue with our calendar. And, Mr. Decker, I would ask that you read the title of 150581.
A resolution authorizing the Commission of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration. Dees convey conditional fees, simple titles, sitting on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements they're on, situated in the 36th Ward of the City of Philadelphia.
Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Council President, I move that Resolution Number 150581 be withdrawn.
It's been moved in property second. That Resolution 150581 be withdrawn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it, and Resolution 150581 is withdrawn. Thank you very much. Mr. Decker, 150819.
A resolution authorizing the Commission of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration. Dees convey conditional fees, simple titles, sitting on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements they're on, situated in the 28th and 32nd Wards of the City of Philadelphia.
Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Ayes have it. Resolution 150819 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 150820.
A resolution authorizing the Commission of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration. Dees convey conditional fees, simple titles, sitting on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements they're on, situated in the 7th and 19th Wards of the City of Philadelphia.
And Chair recognizes Councilwoman Kionna Sanchez.
I move for its adoption.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Ayes have it, and Resolution 150820 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 150824.
A resolution urging the Pennsylvania General Assembly to oppose House Bill 1623, which would cut access to Planned Parenthood preventative health services in Pennsylvania.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Rose Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Ayes have it, and Resolution 150824 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 150825.
A resolution authorizing the Commission of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration. Dees convey conditional fees, simple titles, sitting on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements they're on, situated in the 28th Ward of the City of Philadelphia.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for its adoption.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Ayes have it, and 150825 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 150826.
A resolution also naming the unit block of Malvern Avenue between North 63rd Street and Wynwood Road as Reverend B.D. Way in recognition of the 65th anniversary of Holy Cross Baptist Church and in honor of the dedicated service and tireless effort of its founding pastor, Reverend Joseph H. B.D., Sr.
Chair again recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you again, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Ayes have it, and Resolution 150826 is adopted. 150831 has been held at the request of the sponsor. Mr. Decker, 140607A.
An ordinance amending Title 19 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Finance Taxes and Collections, Chapter 1600 entitled Water and Sewer Rents, by providing for installment payment agreements all under certain terms and conditions.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Kionna Sanchez.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the amendments that have been circulated on this bill.
Thank you. The amendment to 140607A has been moved in second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Ayes have it. Bill Number 140607A is amended. It will be on our second reading and final passes calendar at our next session of council. Mr. Decker, 140716A.
An ordinance amending Chapter 9800 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Landlord and Tenant Rent Control by requiring adequate notice to tenants regarding rent increases and adequate notice to landlords in the case of tenants' decision not to renew a lease.
Thank you. This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call or roll.
Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Good, Councilman Greenlee, Councilman Heenan, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Jones, Councilman O'Brien, Councilman O'Neil, Councilman O, Councilwoman Kionna Sanchez, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilman Squilla, Councilwoman Tasco, Council President Clark.
Aye. Ayes are 15, nays are zero. Majority members present, voting in affirmative that the bill passes. Mr. Decker? It's okay. Sorry to clap. It's a good bill. Mr. Decker, 150502.
An ordinance amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Zoning and Planning by providing for balconies and revising the requirements for roof decks.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call or roll.
Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Good, Councilman Greenlee, Councilman Heenan, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Jones.
It's an amendment. Okay. Okay. We'll draw. All right. We'll repair that. And I don't know, Mr.? Okay. You guys get ready to witness precedence. All right. Let the record reflect. I'm going to ask Councilman Squilla to make a motion that the votes taken on 150502 be rescinded, and we get a second, and we can rescind those votes, and then we will call it up for an amendment.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the votes taken on Bill 150502 be rescinded.
Seconded. It's been moved in property second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it. Let the record reflect that all votes taken on 150502 have been rescinded, and we will now recognize Councilman Squilla on that bill, Bill Number 150502, for the purpose of an amendment.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move an amendment for Bill Number 150502. A copy has been circulated to all members of council.
Second.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it, and Bill Number 15050502 has been amended. It will be placed on our second reading and final passes calendar at our next session of council. Mr. Decker, 150505.
An ordinance amending Section 14200 of the Philadelphia Code and Section 14500 by adding a new subsection entitled ECO East Calahalla Valley District.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call or roll.
Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Good, Councilman Greenlee, Councilman Heenan, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Jones, Councilman O'Brien, Councilman O'Neil, Councilman O, Councilwoman Kionna Sanchez, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilman Squilla, Councilwoman Tasco, Council President Clark.
Aye. The ayes are 15, and nays are zero. Majority members present, voting in affirmative that the bill passes. Mr. Decker, 150714.
An ordinance amending Title 9 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Regulation of Businesses, Trades, and Professions by creating a Wage Theft Coordinator for the city and adding definitions, duties, penalties, fees, procedural requirements, appropriate right of action, and other related items regarding wage theft.
Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just quickly, this bill is about a very basic premise. People should get paid what they're supposed to get paid. I don't think that's controversial. Yet, a study by Temple University estimated that 20,000 to 30,000 workers a week, mostly Philadelphians, get short-changed somehow on their pay. When that many citizens of our city are aggrieved, the City of Philadelphia should try to do something. This Wage Theft Coordinator that this bill proposes, I think, is a very- For the record, has the, we have been working with Mayor, Mayor-elect Kenny's people who support it. They will be actually the ones that will be appointing this coordinator, and again, I think it's a fair way to deal with what is surprisingly a bigger problem, and I think a lot of its thought. So I would respectfully request all members of council to support this bill. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Mr. Decker, call or roll.
Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Good, Councilman Greenly, Councilman Heenan, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Jones, Councilman O'Brien, Councilman O'Neil, Councilman O., Councilwoman Kionna Sanchez, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilman Squilla, Councilwoman Tasco, Council President Clark.
Aye. Eyes of 15, and ayes of zero. Majority members present, voting in affirmative, the bill passes. Thank you. Mr. Decker, please read the title 150708.
An ordinance creating the Philadelphia Commission on the Music Industry.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call or roll.
Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Good, Councilman Greenly, Councilman Heenan, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Jones, Councilman O'Brien, Councilman O'Neil, Councilman O., Councilwoman Kionna Sanchez, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilman Squilla, Councilwoman Tasco, Council President Clark.
Aye. Eyes of 15, and ayes of zero. Majority members present, voting in affirmative, the bill passes. Mr. Decker, you have any additional resolutions?
A resolution recognizing and honoring Kevin J. Bethel, the Deputy Police Commissioner in the Philadelphia Police Department for his commitment and dedication to serving the City of Philadelphia and its citizens, and congratulate him on being named a Diana A. Milner Youth Justice Fellow by the Stonely Foundation, a post that will require him to expend the next three years addressing Philadelphia's school-to-prison pipeline, introduced by Councilwoman Blackwell.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Eyes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing City Council's Committee on Commerce and Economic Development to hold hearings regarding economic opportunity and diversity participation at the Philadelphia International Airport and the Navy Yard, introduced by Councilman Johnson.
Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Eyes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing November 2015 as Epilepsy Awareness Month in honor of individuals living with epilepsy, their families, and those working to improve their quality of life, introduced by Councilman O'Brien.
Chair recognizes Councilman O'Brien.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Thank you. It's been moved in property second. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed? Eyes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring and recognizing the Green Stormwater Infrastructure Partners for advancing the local economic potential, environmental, and social benefits of green city clean waters, introduced by Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Eyes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring and congratulating Pesto Restaurant on winning the first-ever Rahal Way Little Italy Showdown, where they represented Philadelphia and bested restaurants from both New York and San Francisco, introduced by Councilman Squilla.
Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Eyes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and honoring the Philadelphia Interfaith Hospitality Network for their ongoing and compassionate efforts in providing shelter and support to homeless families on the occasion of their 17th Annual Empty Bowl Dinner to be held Wednesday, November 18, 2015, introduced by Councilwoman Bass.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Mr. President, I move for its adoption.
Been moved in property second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
There are no other resolutions on the final passage calendar, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. That concludes our calendar for today. Are there any speeches on the part of the minority? Any speeches on the part of the majority? And the Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. Just want to announce that tomorrow, Friday, November 13th, we will have in our annual Job and Career Fair, which will take place at Verre Recreation Center located at 26th and Marion Street from 12:00 p.m. to 3:00 p.m. At 9:30, we will be hosting the Guide to Earning Your Job Offer Symposium, and that will provide the job fair and career attendees the opportunities how to learn about professionalism, dress for success, making sure they have strong resumes and cover letters, all in the effort to ensuring that they receive some type of level of gainful employment. Again, that's our annual Job and Career Fair, taking place tomorrow at November 13th. Friday, Verre Recreation Center from 12:00 p.m. to 3:00 p.m., 26th and Marion Street. Thank you very much, and have a good day.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make two observations this morning. My heart always fills with pride whenever I see young people on college campuses participating in peaceful protests, and so I, like many, watched very, 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 very closely the activities happening on the University of Missouri's campus, and was reminded of Margaret Mead's profound quotation wherein she said, "Never doubt that a small group of thoughtful, committed citizens can change the world; indeed, it's the only thing that ever has." And so it behooves us to be, to salute the young people who made their point clear that they will not tolerate in 2015 or ever the benign racist leadership of President Wolf. So I want to, in my own way, lift up those young people, because at the end of the day, they really are going to move in and take over our cities, our government, and our universities. Lastly, I want to seize the moment to salute another Penn State alum who has worked earnestly and earned his way to become the top cop in the City of Philadelphia. Thank Mayor-elect Jim Kenny for selecting Richard Ross as his choice for Philadelphia's Police Commissioner, and a few things I think are worthy of repeat. He's a Philly native. He went to Penn State for undergraduate degree and then went on to St. Joseph University to get his master's, and then went on to study law enforcement at the Leadership Harvard School of Government and the FBI headquarters, someone who comes well-prepared and deeply committed to the importance of police work. In May 2008, he told The Enquirer, quote, "I'll be honest with you. One day, God willing, I'd like to be the Police Commissioner here first and foremost," end quote. His day has arrived, and we wish him the very, very best, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Good.
Thank you, Mr. President. Very briefly, I want to also congratulate Richard Ross, and also note that before he went to Penn State, he was a central answer. Thank you very much.
And I'll preempt. In what councilmatic district is that in?
It's in the 8th.
You're talking about where he currently lives?
All right. Okay. I'll let that one slide. I'll just preempt. So council, it's not mine.
It's in the 8th.
8? All right. I just assumed that one of the colleagues were going to give props to that particular council district. It was a preemptive, it was a preemptive notice, but I will stay in my place up on the podium and allow you guys to do that in the future. I apologize. There being no additional speeches, Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown for a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that council stand adjourn until Thursday, November 19, 2015, at 10:00 a.m.
Been moved in property second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Eyes have it. Council has, will stand adjourn until Thursday, November 19, 2015, 10:00 a.m. Thank you all very much.